Okay, Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the planning board meeting via Zoom on April sixteenth, twenty twenty five at seven o'clock P M. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and the township website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after ten thirty P M. May I ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, the next planning board special meeting will be held April thirtieth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M live in Town Hall. There will be no comments via Zoom. The next planning board regular meeting will be held May seventh, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P M via Zoom. Roll call, please, Jamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Ms. Cardoza? Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah.
Mr. Wokes?
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Councilwoman Scapa?
Here.
Mayor McCartney? Mayor McCartney?
President?
Mr. Guayino?
President.
Chairman Baghoff?
Here. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Baghoff, are you expecting a John Kaplan? He has his hand raised in the audience.
Um, Ms. Triolo, or is this for Mr. Simon?
That's for Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Yes, bring it, bring him over, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I pardon the interruption.
No problem. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Sure, we have Mr. Hazel and we have Mr. Scott. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. The application before us this evening is P B twenty four dash nineteen, the Waymaker LLC, block one oh six, lot twenty dot oh three, zone R one forty Eagle Ridge Way. The applicant, the Waymaker LLC, proposes to undertake site work on a lot with an existing one-family dwelling. The proposed site work includes the installation of a subsurface chamber infiltration basin in the rear of the yard as an enhancement to the previously approved stormwater seepage pit detention system. Ms. Triolo for the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are pleased to advise the board that the applicant and the objector have reached terms of an agreement that will resolve a lot of the concerns that the objector had. Um, and I believe will bring peace to the neighborhood. So it is my understanding that the objector will not be proceeding and will not be calling Mr. Keller back and that they're returning the application to the applicant to complete it. And the only way that we can complete it is by reviewing the terms of the agreement, introducing the exhibits that are part of the agreement, and having the applicant's engineer explain it, and for the applicant's engineer to provide other relevant testimony that we believe would be necessary for the board to reach their final decision and vote this evening. So, um, I would like to just, um, move into that unless you're, Mr. Chairman, you have any, I was almost going to call you your honor, but I'm just wondering if you have have any questions before I actually go into the agreement briefly on the legal end of it and then, um, have Mr. Coakley from Colliers Engineer, Engineering and Design come in with the technical aspects of it. And to the extent that it impacts the application, we would ask that the application be amended to include these matters. And we would further request that the board accept the settlement agreement. And should you vote in favor of this application to make the agreement a condition of approval as the applicant is fully prepared to proceed in that manner.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Triolo. At the end of all the testimony, uh, our consulting engineer, Mr. Scott, will weigh in on this. And prior to that, Ms. McGovern, uh, do you have anything to say about this?
Now, the only thing I would say is I know there was a lot of back and forth. Mr. Kaplan, uh, there is an agreement now, right?
Uh, the terms of the engineering has been agreed to. Uh, I don't believe all the terms of the agreement have been set down in writing, but we do have a agreement as to the engineering changes to the project.
Right, okay. Um, that was what I was most concerned about, as long as, uh, that's in a positive light. We, uh, I'm, I also know that Mr. Scott has to comment to confirm. I don't know whether he's completely been brought up to speed, but he'll listen, right? And, um, we'll be asking him to comment, but thank you. Thank you for your hard work. I know there was a lot going on in the last few days between the both sides.
Thank you, Triolo. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan, and thanks to Mr. Simon. Ms. Triolo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, the parties met, um, multiple times since, uh, and moreover, the last week, but prior than that, in order for the applicant and the objector, uh, the Lululemon Park Board of Managers to examine what each of their concerns were and then what was in the capacity of the applicant in order to meet those concerns and address them through engineering actions. So there were a series of communications that went on, on the legal end between myself and Mr. Simon. And then we had the engineering end as to whether or not, uh, what we as attorneys were discussing was feasible and workable, um, and would solve the concerns of Lululemon Park. Um, Lululemon Park basically indicated that they were concerned about stormwater drainage. There were no issues raised to me and to the best of my knowledge, to my professionals, that the stormwater management system that was proposed by Colliers with this application and fully designed and submitted was not the issue. There were issues that they were concerned about that related to, um, stormwater management that was extraneous to the stormwater management plan because the stormwater management plan and system fully comply with the law and the ordinances and the state statutes. So the parties agreed that there would be additional, um, stormwater controls, that there would be, uh, that the landscaping that we had previously represented to be completed was, um, fleshed out, as you would, uh, to be a little bit more sensitive to Lululemon Park's concerns and that the, um, specific landscaping materials would then, um, help to control any surface stormwater, um, that might roll off the property, so to speak. So we went through a series of landscaping plans. We went through, um, multiple descriptions of different plant lives and what they would do to be the best to serve. And we came up with a plan for forty that addressed all of that. And Mr. Coakley, when he takes, um, the stand again and gets re sworn in, he will testify to the specifics, but I wanted you to know that on a legal basis, we've committed to doing all of these plantings. Um, that doesn't affect the stormwater management system. It doesn't require the system to be changed, altered, or redesigned. What was submitted to the board is still the system, and we are adding, um, plant materials to enhance that, if you would. There was also a request from Lululemon Park that they wanted, um, the stormwater ditch to, um, have a different flow instead of being straight. They wanted it to have a curvature. Um, I make no comments about the engineering proficiency of having a curve as opposed to having a straight ditch, but that's what they wanted. And my client, the applicant, has an agreement with the adjoining property owner to move the ditch to the adjoining property in the configuration that Lululemon Park wanted, provided that, and it's a, it's a, um, condition in the agreement, which is provided that it isn't, um, regulated water, uh, because you can't touch a ditch if it's regulated water, um, and start moving it around on other people's property. So, uh, we've committed to doing the work. We committed to the design of the ditch. We've committed to the composition. We've committed to adding, um, various elements of riprap and other delaying matters, but it's all dependent on whether or not, um, it's regulated waters. So that was how we dealt with the properties. The other concern that Lululemon Park had was that they felt that the concrete pipe, the elliptical concrete pipe, uh, not that we were able to verify it, but they felt that the elliptical concrete pipe was accelerating the flow of water.
Excuse me, Ms. Triolo, will, will, will any of this be covered by, um, Collier? I, not that I don't want you to say everything, but if it's, if it's in the document that you're presenting, and if Colliers rep is going to, Mr. Cockley is going to testify to all this, we can just cut to the chase and do that if that's okay with you.
I just want to finish that we're going to take out the concrete pipe
Okay.
at their request and that Colliers has designed a substitute that met with the agreement of Lululemon Park's engineers. So that was my conclusion. It was three aspects, and I just wanted to bring them globally to you.
Thank you.
The agreement has been signed by my client
Yeah.
and I submitted it to Jamalat the minute I got it, which was about six thirty this evening. I've copied your attorney
Thank you.
and I have copied Mr. Simon on it, that it is a signed document and that we are committed to proceed in that manner.
Excellent.
Um, I would like to have Colliers engineer Jesse Coakley, um, be brought back up, and if he needs to be re sworn, we will have him re sworn.
Uh, it's a while, so I would re swear him, Ms. McGovern.
Okay, Mr. Coakley, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have to, well, dear Mr. Coakley, his, uh, his bona fides are on the record, and I think we can go from there, Ms. Triolo.
So I'm going to share my screen here, and I'm going to start with the first exhibit. Um, forgive me, I don't recall where we left off in the exhibit numbering here.
Do we have these exhibits provided to the board?
They were, they were provided today to Jamalat. I'm like, what's the next exhibit marking?
Okay, before you begin, Mr. Coakley, can I ask you just a couple of questions? Um, can you confirm on the record that you have, in fact, met with the engineer for Lululemon Park Board of Managers who were the objectors in this matter?
Yes.
And you heard me, uh, briefly outline the terms of the settlement agreement, and you're familiar with those terms, is that correct?
Yes.
And did I say them relatively accurately for an attorney and not an engineer?
Yes, I'll get into the specifics.
Um, what we have on the screen now is exhibit A to the agreement.
I believe it's A one, Diana.
Okay, so this is the first exhibit that we're marking out. No, uh, Priscilla, there's two different things. What you're describing is attached to your settlement agreement. Is that what you're talking? This is exhibit A to the settlement.
I just want him to acknowledge that it's exhibit A to the settlement agreement, and then we can have it marked for the meeting exhibit.
Okay.
Just want to give him the source. So this is exhibit A to the settlement agreement?
Correct.
Okay, now we can go back and what are the, um, what is the exhibit number? Uh, for the board?
It's, I think, Jamalat just said it's the first exhibit that's actually being marked.
Yeah, it's A one.
A one.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to say exhibit A one and then exhibit A to the settlement agreement.
Okay. Mr. Coakley, did Colliers Engineering and Design prepare these agreements?
Yes.
The not agreement, excuse me, these exhibit?
Yeah, can I just, hold on one second. Did, uh, did you send this to Mr. Scott, the township engineer, the consulting engineer?
He got one, I think, that didn't include an update that was agreed upon with Bowman earlier today. I think he got a version on Friday, so this is slightly updated since then.
This is the first time Mr. Scott and the board are seeing this, okay? All right.
I can explain the difference between what he saw before as well and say like what the updates were based on our latest meeting earlier this morning.
I just want the board to understand the township engineer has not signed off on this. This is an agreement between the two parties, but not, the, the town engineer is now looking at that for the first time. Okay, thank you. Keep going.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to have Mr. Coakley explain a little bit of the background, um, with regard to your meeting with Lululemon Park's engineer. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you also had discussions with Mr. Scott over this past few days?
I was pretty much keeping him apprised of the developments as they were happening, um, that we were approaching an agreement and that we would be sharing exhibits. Again, they were shared with him on Friday. Um, and then they, they've been updated earlier today, so there's a few edits today that he hasn't seen yet.
And there was a meeting today with a representative of Lululemon Park as well as their engineer in which the, um, the, the exhibits that were about to review were finalized?
Correct.
Okay, so when we received them today, they were literally completed as a result of a meeting that happened today.
Correct.
I just wanted to clear for the record that we weren't withholding anything until the meeting this evening, that these, uh, the agreement and the terms and the engineering for the agreement were completed, um, sometime this afternoon and were submitted as quickly as we had them. Uh, Mr. Coakley, can you please explain to the board what we're looking at, which property, and then walk the board through what the changes are and the design and which part of the landscaping essentially is original and which has been changed?
Sure. So this is an exhibit, obviously A one, we're calling it. It is a, the grading and drainage plan from our preliminary and final major site plan set that was previously submitted and reviewed, but it has basically a colorized overlay with the proposed modifications to the plan. So I can walk the board through what those modifications are as they tie to the agreement and what these, you know, kind of various colors mean. So
Would you please do that?
Sure. So first and foremost, um, there's a blue rectangle in the middle of the screen here that is overlaid on top of the previously proposed, or I should say the proposed subsurface infiltration basin. The blue rectangle represents the revised limits of that system, so it actually got smaller based on updated calculations that our office ran following the geotechnical testing that was requested by the board and performed in, on, uh, February seventeenth. It also reflects the calculations taking into account the land cover at the site in a pre-two thousand and four condition, uh, when there was no impervious cover. So that was one of the, um, prior comments at a meeting. So this is the size of the system that, um, the blue rectangle will be on the revised plan and the full calculations, you know, for that report will be, will be provided.
Okay, so that's a condition?
Yes. Yep. The second thing to discuss, and I think was, um, as far as, and forgive me, I forgot to mention, this is for forty Eagle Ridge Way, so this is obviously the subject, um, property here. Um, the other thing that was discussed, um, at length was really the intent to reestablish vegetation on the property. Um, so what we did here with kind of this colorized version of the map here was indicating that, you know, the driveway was going to be replaced with the pervious pavers, which was previously testified to. This kind of light yellow or manila color, we'll call it, is the previously installed, uh, landscape areas. Um, the brighter yellow is proposed landscape area, so some additional area around the perimeter of the building in the rear. Um, this lighter green color is going to be lawn area. So typical grass lawn, it will be maintained mode, you know, for the, for the use by the applicant, you know, and his family. The darker green that you see at the rear of the property, in between the two tiered walls, in the corner, wrapping around the side and extending up a portion, is going to be a proposed ground cover mix. And that's, you know, identified on here as a quarter annual, uh, ryegrass seed, a quarter creeping red fescue seed, a quarter perennial ryegrass, and a quarter white clover seed. So this was strategically placed at the rear and will be left in, you know, a ground cover, you know, state. It's a more robust, um, vegetation, um, and that was to provide additional stabilization in the lawn areas, um, to help, um, prevent future erosion, um, as that was one of the major things that the representatives of Lululemon Park and their engineers were expressing to us. Also, as Ms. Triolo indicated earlier, one of the, um, m- main requests of Lululemon Park was to, is to remove the elliptical pipe, um, that was installed as a replacement for the clay pipes. Um, we've agreed to remove that and replace it with a riprap lined ditch that will also include, uh, stone check dams, which will act as a stormwater calming velocity reducing measure. We also agreed to double the size of the previously proposed scour hole at the kind of end of the property or the end of the ditch now before the water, you know, goes down, down, down the hillside.
You, did you say double the size, is that what it was?
Double the size of the skimmer, yeah. Um, that was originally where we had kind of left everything, and I believe that's what Mr. Scott had seen on Friday's exhibits. Um, and I'll get to forty-two in a minute. I just want to stick with forty here. On the call earlier today, we agreed to, I think, increase the limits of the ground cover. I think we were showing maybe some lawn below the second wall, um, not all the way up to the property line, but we've increased the dark green ground cover in that area. Um, we also agreed to install a second curtain drain, um, just above the retaining wall, but at the bottom of the sloped area, the sloped lawn area. Um, this would capture any additional runoff that was sheeting down this sloped area, sloped lawn area. It would be captured, it would be a perforated pipe in a stone trench, and that would connect to the existing seepage tanks there. Um, so that's kind of a almost a tertiary method to capture this, you know, um, sheeting runoff, if you will, from, from the lawn area. We also agreed to install, um, four trees in this location. Um, I think the previous iteration had shown two that Mr. Scott had seen, but there'll be four trees in addition to the ground covers, you know, that are, that are planted in that area. So the trees obviously offer a larger, um, root structure and additional, you know, stabilization in that area, um, in the corner of the property here. So that is the exhibit as it stands to, um, lot forty. I can go to forty-two because I think that also has a component that Ms. Triolo touched on that, um, is, was, was a important request from Lululemon Park as well.
Before you go on, Mr. Coakley, Mr. Baghoff, uh, would you, does the board or the board professionals want to, uh, pose any questions while this exhibit is up on the screen so that it can be properly referred to?
I think we need to hear how forty-two integrates with this, and then we can do everything at once.
Okay, so you want him to proceed with exhibit A two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Jesse, if you would?
Yes. So I'll, I'm going to just, just for a second. I'll call this exhibit A two.
That's exhibit A two, and that document is exhibit B to the settlement agreement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. If you could please explain to the board what this component of the settlement with Lululemon Park includes?
Yes. So this is the black and white imagery that you see here is sheet two of nine from the site plan set that was submitted for forty-two Eagle Ridge Way, which is the demolition plan. So it's an existing conditions plan as it stands today of lot forty-two. Um, so north, it's a similar orientation, um, just for the reference, lot forty is just to the left-hand side of the page here. Eagle Ridge Way is at the bottom. Lululemon Park properties are, you know, to the top of the page here. You can see what is shown on here is kind of the approximate limits of the prior structure that was previously demolished on the property. Can see them in the dashed lines here just for reference. So what was requested by Lululemon Park was to, um, locate the ditch in a manner similar to the prior, um, aerial maps, uh, that, that have the ditch extending about forty feet or so from the common property corner on the south, um, side or east side, I should say, um, and restore, or I guess like, you know, extend the length of the ditch going to that spot. So the blue line here represents that approximate ditch location. Again, the dark green color represents that, uh, ground cover mix that would be planted there, so not just lawn. Um, and then these are some of the trees that are in the area, um, you know, so we're obviously trying to re- respect that. Re- respect that. The other request. Was to. Construct some type of temporary diversion feature. On lot forty-two. From a stormwater perspective to. Mitigate the stormwater runoff from lot forty-two in this. I'm gonna call it interim state from. When the house was previously demolished. Until a future time. That forty-two's application, you know, is pending before. The zoning board and. You know, hopefully that. Moves forward. The intent of the temporary diversion feature is really to be um. A sort of burn that runs the entire length of the property extends up to the ditch such that. The water. As the topography kind of flows west to east here towards that area. It would. Prevent that runoff from initially just entering the ditch, which then, as we know. Discharges down the mountain. The temporary diversion would. Act as a berm that would allow the water to stay on lot forty-two for a short period of time. And in the heavier storms. Would crest over the top of the berm and then sheet at one elevation, you know, down. Which is a preferred method for erosion control rather than a channelized flow.
Mister Coakley, I'm sorry, is there an easement from lot forty to forty-two for this to happen?
Yeah, I believe Miss.
There's an agreement, there's an agreement between the property owners, Mister Bagoff. And an easement between the property owners.
Okay, for the ditch or for all of this other thi- all these other things, just for the moving of the ditch, right?
The agreement between the two property owners is for the work to proceed. That Llewelyn Park wanted, the construction of the berm. And advanced plantings um along the uh ditch area. Uh, that would have been planted when forty-two was developed anyway, so we're just moving forward a little bit faster. And there would be an e- there is an easement between the neighbors. With regard to the relocation of the drainage ditch. Um, from forty onto forty-two um. I would have given it to you, but I'm where. We have an easement, but the the problem is the actual description, and because this was in a flux until this afternoon. But I can provide the agreement between the two property owners.
I would say that should be a condition, yes.
Between the two property owners.
Perfect, okay.
Before your next meeting on April thirtieth.
No, it could just be a condition. We can have it as a condition to be satisfied.
That's fine. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mister Coakley, go right ahead.
Good question. Um, those are pretty much the extent of the improvements um that would. Obviously necessitate the easement here um for forty-two. So. Those two exhibits combined reflect. Where we are at um. With both properties.
May I just ask one question? If uh for some reason forty-two decides they're not going forward with. Their application in front of zoning board or something happens in front of the zoning board, there's this agreement still. Will happen. These, this, this work along the edge, is that right?
Yes, the application before the zoning board is currently scheduled for its first hearing in June. And um from what I understand of the zoning board's calendar, I presume I will be on the calendar. For June, July, and August um. And. The, what is. Agreed to between the properties will not impact. Uh, the application. The only thing that would have to be done. Is probably the site plan in order to identify the easement area. Uh, that landscaping area was already planned, so it's already part of their landscape plan. Uh, but uh relocating the ditch onto the property uh would have to be added to the site plan. But the layout. Of forty-two. With its application before the zoning board is not impacted by this at all.
Okay.
Mister Coakley, you have anything else to share?
And I don't as a release to these two exhibits, but. I did want to. Um, touch on. Two other items.
The ditch.
Yep, the ditch. So. One, I think there were some prior questions about the steep slope. Um, obviously, as part of the agreement, we're going to be removing the thirty-six inch pipe um. The township ordinance for steep slopes um does have. Exceptions listed um. In section twenty-five dash twenty-eight point five. Um, it says the terms of this section shall not apply to the following areas which. Previously contained structures or other improvements or were previously graded. In reviewing some of the other aerial photography, aerial imagery for the site. I believe when the house was constructed in two thousand six, two thousand seven originally. If you look at some Google imagery. You can see that it was disturbed pretty much in its entirety um, and so. Removing the pipe. Obviously, it got put in, but it wouldn't trigger the steep slope requirement or ordinance because. Um, it would be exempt since it was previously graded. Then, as far as the ditch is concerned. Obviously, at a um prior hearing, it was. You know, brought up that it. Might have been or may be considered a regulated water by New Jersey D E P. Um, in our professional premium, the stormwater drainage ditch. Is not a D E P regulated water uh and therefore. Does not contain riparian zones um. And. I want to point out, New Jersey Administrative Code, Section seven thirteen. Dash two point two A three um. Accepts that a segment of water is not a regulated water. If it has a drainage area of less than fifty acres. And one or more of the following conditions applies. Item one, the water has no discernible channel. That does not apply here. This clearly has. A defined channel or discernible channel. Number two says. The water is confined in a, within a lawfully existing man-made conveyance structure or drainage feature such as a pipe, culvert, ditch. Channel or basin. Not including any water that historically possessed a naturally occurring discernible channel which has been piped, coveted, ditched, or similarly modified. That applies here. And the third one says the water is not connected to a regulated water by a channel or pipe. A review of USGS Stream Stats Application, which is a. Pretty common application that. Engineers use to gauge tributary areas to streams and. You know, watershed points um. Shows that the nearest available data point, uh which is located downstream of the ditch. Um, on forty Eagle Ridgeway, uh which is at the intersection of Mountain Avenue. And Linwood Way in Llewelyn Park has a drainage area of about twenty-three point nine acres. As the ditch on forty Eagle Ridgeway is upstream of that point. It can be concluded that the ditch has a drainage area of less than twenty-three point nine acres. So. We clearly passed that first threshold, the ditch has a drainage area of less than fifty acres. A review of the historical data. Topographic maps and imagery indicates the ditch is a lawfully existing man-made conveyance. Lawfully existing features includes an existing structure and or use that was established prior to January thirty-first nineteen eighty. The historical maps, including the township's nineteen fifty-nine topography, topographical map show. The stormwater drainage ditch to be present well before nineteen eighty. Additional confirmation of its age. Can be verified by the use of the clay tile pipes at the bottom of the ditch that were removed. That are on the applicant's party where it joins twenty-nine Mountain Avenue. Those clay tile pipes are still in use at the end of Llewelyn Park's part of the stormwater drainage ditch at its junction with the Mountain Avenue. With Mountain Avenue. Clay tile pipes were kind of phased out of common use in the seventies um. Which is just further proof that this this was existing before nineteen eighty. Additionally, the stormwater ditch is not connected to any regulated water and ends in the West Orange Stormwater. Uh, municipal sewer. So. The ditch is lawfully existing. Not connected to a regulated water. And has a drainage area of less than fifty acres. So therefore. It checks those boxes and it is not a regulated water. Under the New Jersey Administrative Code. I wrote a letter to this effect um and shared it with Mister Scott, um but I'd be happy to submit it to. The board as well um.
That'd be great. Please submit, Mr. Triolo, please have that submitted minutes. Uh, yeah, I'm a left. Go right ahead, Mister Coakley.
Have you covered everything, Jesse?
I think that was this, those were the items I had on my list uh here to go over direct, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so um. We'll start with Mister Scott. Mister Scott, you've heard the testimony. And we'd like you to weigh in on this.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Um. Few things, um, I guess the first thing is, is that I appreciate the fact that they've worked hard to come up with a. I guess an agreement between uh Colliers and uh. The engineer for Llewelyn Park. Uh, unfortunately, we were not part of that discussion. I say we, I'm talking about myself uh as this, you know, reviewing engineer on this application. As well as the uh municipal engine engineer, Mister. You know, I I I understand that there is, I guess, some kind of agreement, but I would think that that agreement needs to. To be also inclusive of uh of the township and their engineers as well uh in in coming up with this agreement. Um. That that that's the first one. Uh, you know, we just seen this this plan, this one that's on the screen, uh, you know, today. Uh, doesn't give me a whole lot of time to really opinionate on on the design. Uh, it is similar to the plan that we've received on Friday um and they have.
I can't, I'm not, I'm having a very difficult time hearing Mister Scott. I apologize. I don't know whether you need to be closer to your computer or speak up, but I'm having a difficult time.
Right, put yourself on mute and then you don't get the clicker.
Hello, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, so I just want to go back. So that uh Miss Triolo, Triolo can hear me clearly. I was just stating that uh it was unfortunate that the the township was not included. In some of the uh, I guess, the the working session. Um, you know, Colliers and uh the the engineer for the Wellon Park um. You know, some of the things that have, I guess, been worked out. Um, it would have been great to have seen this prior to today. Um, this latest plan that is being shown on the screen. Um, you know, I I like the idea of it, uh adding an additional um curtain drain. But um again, you know, we have no supporting calculations or anything. Like, again, this is the first time really seeing this um. Was was earlier today. Um. And also with regard to um. The. I guess the restoration of the drainage ditch, it sounds like they're trying to put the ditch back to where it was. Um, you know, which we we appreciate the effort. Um, you know, it's it's going to be. Difficult to do that in a way that is gonna make sure that, I guess, the the way that the drainage ditch. Acted before, that it will do that again in this situation. Um, we know or we have an idea based on, you know, some of the uh. Previous hearings from the residents and the neighbors at Llewelyn Park that they didn't have this problem until some of this work had taken place. Uh, the drainage ditch um, you know. I do, even though Mister Colliers, you know, he he states some facts in his in his letter. I still do feel like uh it is a regulated water body. Um, and it probably does have a riparian zone associated with it, but again, you know, I I just received his letter today. We did speak yesterday. But I just got his le- letter late this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to really um, you know, verify uh the points that he touched on in his letter. Um. Excuse me, just let me go back to my notes really quickly. Um. Also, uh, this is a, you know, the the. The drainage ditch, the fact that we did believe that it's uh regulated, you know, by the D E P, uh they have been notified. Um, so we are waiting to hear back from them as to whether or not it is considered. So I I don't think it's. You know, mine or this board's jurisdiction. I think we need to get input from the D E P as to whether or not uh that ditch is indeed regulated. Um. What else? Uh. Yeah, that's, that's all that I have a- at this point. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing. With regard to the drainage ditch uh and uh Mister Coakley's testimony. Uh, you said that the drainage ditch doesn't have an area of greater than uh fifty acres. I believe that was the threshold. Does that drainage area take into account? The um, the drainage area that for the point at Crystal Lake. Because there's a large drainage area that comes, that's being drained from that site. That comes through the the pipe under uh Eagle Ridgeway and then into the drainage ditch. So. You know, you're saying if it's under fifty acres, I also want to know, did you take that into account?
Is that a question, Mister Scott?
That's a question for Mister Coakley, yes.
All right, Mister Chairman, I I don't mind if Mister Coakley answers the question, but I do have some questions for Mister Scott.
Well, let's let Mister Coakley answer Mister Scott's question first, and then we'll go, we'll go the other way, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, the the watershed area inclusive of the part of Crystal Point that comes down to the ditch. In total would be less than fifty acres.
Okay, so you you're aware that. They, that a lot of their drainage area comes to their, comes to that location after going through, I guess, the the wetland area. Then it drains through, okay?
Uh, the one that comes across like under Eagle Ridgeway, and then there's some pipes that come down Eagle Ridgeway too. So that's.
Yeah.
That's included in there, yeah.
So that's the twenty-nine acres or whatever I believe it was, twenty, twenty-four acres?
That's what's even tributary further um downstream of our stream. So I think it's. I'd have to do the exact math. Once I saw that downstream of us was less than. Twenty-five, I knew we were well under the fifty, but we have to. We would have to get the exact number. I don't know what the exact number is.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Scott, I've got a question, and then Mister Triolo, you can go. So if the D E P comes in and disagrees with Mister Coakley and says the drainage ditch can't be moved, how will this affect? Everything that they've agreed to, and is there another solution that could be had? Or do you need time to look at this?
I mean, I would need time to look at this. Um, if they say that the drainage ditch has to remain where it is. It looks like they're trying to make some efforts by putting the um, I guess, the this. The stone-lined trench in place of the uh elliptical pipe. Uh, with the check dams, but again. You know, we have no supporting calculation. We have nothing really other than, you know, what we're seeing here right now to really be able to verify whether or not. It'd be a defective solution.
Okay, I got it. Uh, Mister Triolo.
Um. Uh, just for the uh board certification, the agreement does address the fact that if, in fact. Um, there. Is any communication with the D E P to try to um implicate this. Stormwater drainage ditch into a regulated. Um, implicate this stormwater drainage ditch into a regulated water. Um, that the applicant would be relieved of the responsibility of, um. Relocating the ditch. I would say to the chairman, we take extreme objection to the cons to the concept of restoration of the ditch. Because it is a relocation as the ditch on forty has always existed, at least as far as this client, my client knows. His own property. Um, I have a few questions for Mr. Scott. Uh, Mr. Scott, are you aware that there were more? Um, spillways of the stormwater that came off of Crystal Point rather than just. One that seems to be the target?
No, I was not aware of any more spillways.
So you're you're not aware that there was always a ditch that went straight down on forty? And there was a flow over a branch that may have. Gone on to forty two, but there was more than one spillway in these stitches.
I've I've seen a drainage ditch, or should I say I've seen the spillway that leads from forty. On to, uh, I believe the Kessler's property. Um, I've been out there on more than one occasion, and I've only seen that one one discharge point. I haven't seen any other discharge points. That goes from the property.
But you weren't there, you weren't part of the inspection crew by S C D, uh, H E P S C D. When they examined the ditch and asked for it to be, um, cleaned out.
I was not.
So you wouldn't dispute that H E P S C D. Recognized that there was a ditch there when they asked for it to be cleaned out, and it was cleaned out on the forty side of the. Um, the silt fence, the construction fence.
Not part of that inspection, and I still have not received any documentation regarding S S C D's, uh. Requirement to change out that pipe and put in the elliptical pipe. That was something that was testified to by Mr. Cone. But I've never seen any documentation that says that, uh, you know, that directs them to do so.
Uh, the elliptical pipe was not what I was referring to. I was talking to you about the ditch and the fact that there was a ditch on forty. Um, there may have been some historical, uh, tracks on forty two, but there was always a ditch on forty. And S C D recognized it when it told my client to clean out the ditch.
Mr. Yello, I think Mr. Scott is asking for documentation. Uh, that's what he's he's doing. I want to help this out here. He's asking for any documentation that at the applicant has to support exactly what you're saying, the the board and our.
We had the. We had the absolute testimony of, um, Mr. Grabowski who explained about the conversation.
We need something from S C D.
We did, and we submitted them. It's already submitted as part of the record.
Yeah, and that that was that one document that said put rip rap in. More rip rap.
Okay, so we'll have that given, uh, make that available to Mr. Scott.
Well, that's on our, it it is on the agenda. Um, it is part of our documents, and but no. I understand what Mr. Scott is saying. He's saying that document doesn't mention the elliptical pipe.
Right.
Well, we weren't, I wasn't asking him about the elliptical pipe. He just said the document doesn't refer to it. But I wasn't questioning him about the elliptical pipe. I asked him a question about the ditch, and he said that he was not. There when S C D did their inspections, and he's not aware that there were more than. One ditch ways that the stormwater traveled. But I take it, Mr. Scott, that it is your opinion that the stormwater traveling through that ditch is coming from Crystal Point. Is that correct?
Uh, some of it, yes, absolutely.
The most of it?
I can't say most of it. I don't know specifically. I don't have calculations on the Crystal Point. Design.
So you don't have calculations on the municipal stormwater sewer system that's in, um, Eagle Ridge Way?
I do not.
Okay. You have made a determination in your mind that the water in the stormwater. Ditch is regulated. On what do you base that opinion?
Well, I wouldn't say that I've made that determination. That's why we have contacted the D P for them to make that determination.
So you're you're not saying that it's regulated water. You're saying I don't know if it's regulated water.
That is correct.
Okay, but you don't dispute that. Mr. Coakley's. Opinion is important as a professional engineer.
No, his opinion is important, but I'm not saying that I completely agree to it.
So can you please tell me what and who filed with the D P?
The municipal engineer requested that we, uh, reach out to the Department of Environmental Protection to let them know about the situation. The fact that, you know, that we believe that it's regulated water, and we wanted for them to to look into that situation.
So you filed something with the D P?
Yes.
What did you file?
Well, we basically just reached out to them. We contacted them to let them know. We sent them some historical mapping, the nineteen fifty nine topogat topographic mapping as well as the two thousand ten topographic map. That was provided to us.
Who did you contact?
Engineer. I don't know the name specifically. I don't have that handy. I can provide you with that as well as what, uh, uh, the information that we sent to them.
Did you do this before or after the planning board application was being heard?
After the application being heard.
So during the course of these hearings, somewhere in between, you contacted the D P. And you submitted some documents, but you're not sure to a person that you don't know, and you didn't give a copy of the.
Okay, let's let's not go there. He answered the question. This document's been submitted. Let's move on, please.
Uh, can I please have a copy of what you submitted and to whom you submitted it?
Yes, you will get that tomorrow.
Do you know when you contacted D P?
Uh, this was sometime after the meeting that was held at City Hall between, um. The municipal engineer, Miss Carbio, myself, uh, Mr. Keller from Bowman, the applicant, I'm sorry, the, uh, Long Parks. Uh, engineer and one of Mr. Coakley's, um, colleagues at Colliers engineer who was there remotely. So this, we had a meeting to discuss to try to come up with some type of solution that seems to have, uh. They've come up with a solution without us in the recent weeks, and during that meeting. We, uh, we were directed by the municipal engineer to reach out to the D P.
So that was that group meeting that you had, and if I can recall, that was Eric Keller, yourself, Jesse Coakley. Zaibeth.
Yes. Engineer who worked for, um, Crystal Point, uh, I'm sorry, for the point at Crystal Lake as well. I can't recall her name right now.
Okay, that was somebody from Kipcon, is that right?
Kipcon, yes.
Okay, and at the meeting, did you announce that you were going to contact the D P? Or did this happen afterwards?
This was after the meeting.
And who was in the meeting with you when there was a decision made to contact the D P?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
I said, who was in the meeting with you when the decision was made to contact the D P?
Uh, I believe the engineer from Colliers, I believe he was off of the screen. Cause he was there remotely, but I believe the other people were still in the room, which was the engineer from.
Oh, that's the meeting. Now, I'm asking about the meeting when you decided to contact the D P. Who was at that meeting?
This was that at that meeting where we were asked by, uh, Ms. Carbio to contact the D P.
Who said that? I didn't hear the name.
Miss Carbio, the, uh, town attorney, uh, engineer, engineer.
Mr. Bio? Whoa, Zaibeth, okay. So I understood from Mr. Scott that there was this meeting, and after the meeting of the engineers. There was a decision made to contact the D P. So I'm asking him who was in this after the group meeting. When the decision was made to contact the D P.
It was a request from the municipal engineer to me to contact the D P. Mr. Keller was there as well as the engineer from Kipcon.
Is there any specific reason why you didn't tell Mr. Coakley or tell? The property owner or tell. The attorney for the planning board so that she could tell me about this communication with the D P? Is there any reason?
No specific reason.
Did anybody tell you not to tell us?
No.
Okay. I know you asked Mr. Coakley about considering Crystal Point. Um, as part of the drainage area. You are aware of the topography that Crystal Point, not all of Crystal Point comes down to Eagle Ridge Way, correct?
Um, I I know that a portion of it does. I don't know that all of it does.
Just a portion, right? So Mr. Coakley would analyze just that portion, not all of Crystal Point.
Yes, whatever area that's going to that drainage ditch is what he should be analyzing.
We're here for a stormwater management system. I did not see anything that you've said or written that you, uh, disagree with the stormwater management. System that Colliers has proposed for Lot Forty. Is that correct?
Only what was in my initial review letter.
In your initial review letter, I think, or it might have been at the last hearing. You had a question concerning the soils. And we took a break, and in that time, Colliers prepared a geotechnical data report. Um, April second, twenty twenty five. Do you recall receiving a copy of that?
Yes.
And you were present at the site when the work was done in order to test the soils.
Yes.
And you personally observed that they complied in all respects with regard to their consistency and percolation.
Yes.
So my question again is on the stormwater system that is proposed for Lot Forty. As the engineer for the planning board, you have no issues with the design that Colliers has presented. For stormwater management. For forty Eagle Ridge Way.
I would agree with that. That's correct.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes, I am in agreement with their design.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Okay, um. Ms. McGovern, you're gonna have to help me out on this one. I would like to have questions from the board. Only on the stormwater management system. There's been a lot of extraneous information. That is part and parcel with the property, but not the application. Does that make sense so far?
Yes, yes.
I'm asking Ms. McGovern. So I would like to ask the board to focus on the stormwater management system. That Collier has provided. And these other pieces of information will have to be reviewed by our township engineer. And we can, if you so choose, condition the application. On that evaluation prior to the hearing to memorialize this and any other. Body that has sway over how this app, how this project will be carried through. So again, I would like to focus on the stormwater management system that, uh, Mr. Coakley testified to. And our, uh, consulting engineer, Mr. Scott, has testified to. So with that in mind, so let's focus on that. With that in mind, and Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions for, uh, Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
Chairman, my questions are really about questioning the, uh, not regulated water because I remember hearing testimony about. Property adjacent with wetlands. So no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Counselperson Scarper, do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
No, not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
No, no questions at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Catford, do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
Yeah, I do have one question about, um, the geotechnical testing. Um, I'm trying to recall, I I did look at the report at some point, um, related to the bedrock that was encountered. Do you have the adequate separation distance between, um, bedrock and the bottom of the infiltration basin?
So we do. The system, I believe, has an invert, uh, the stone where we conducted the test, which was. Um, two feet above the bedrock encounter, which is the minimum required, so.
Okay. That's my only question. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, do you have any other questions for Mr. Coakley on his testimony?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, again, members of the public. We're gonna open this up to questions to Mr. Coakley on his testimony on the stormwater ma, I'm sorry, Mr. Klein, did I get you?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure. Um, I want to make that you didn't have another question, um. We're gonna open it up for, you have three minutes to ask a question. So if you ramble on and the three minutes you used up, then Mr. Coakley will not have a chance to a- answer the question. So we're gonna have a clock for three minutes. We're gonna be very, very specific on this, and let's focus on the stormwater management system. In the same vein that the board was asked and had, uh, no questions so far. So to that, uh, end, would, uh, please raise your hand and be identified, and you can ask Mr. Coakley a question about his testimony.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have someone with their hand raised. I'm gonna bring them in now.
Go right ahead.
Jerry Sweeney, welcome to the meeting. Please unmute yourself and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Gerald Sweeney. I'm a resident of Llewellyn Park, and, um. I was one of the participants in the meeting today, called on short notice to try to work out the engineering plan. And I think it was effective. I I just had a couple, uh, quick questions. Um, I noticed the the document presented as A, Exhibit A. Is referred to as the amended landscape plan. Uh, when we looked at it earlier, it was described as the grading and drainage plan. And and my understanding is that the plan itself does cover. Uh, drainage and other activities. So my original, my question is. Why is this now described just as a landscaping plan? Because it does include. Elements of the stormwater management.
Mr. Coakley?
Sure. So I think it was originally, Mr. Sweeney, um. Intended to be mostly just for the ground covers. Um, so you're right, after the meeting earlier today where we added. The curtain drain. The title in the corner really shouldn't be amended landscape plan, and we'll, we can change that for the, um. You know, inclusion in in the settlement agreement. That's not a problem.
What's it gonna be called now?
I would probably call it amended landscape. And drainage exhibit.
Okay.
Um, cause it is really an exhibit. It doesn't have. Enough detailed information where I would call it a plan. Okay, so I'll 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 change it on my.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney, do you have another question?
Yes, I do have another question, so, uh. Uh, this, Mr. Coakley, and and thank you, uh, is it your opinion that the? Uh, is it your opinion that the changes that were made? Uh, the addition of of the curtain wall, the the uh. Uh, additions of the the trees, landscaping, vegetation, others were. Are necessary and appropriate for stormwater management?
I think they are very appropriate. I think the stormwater system that we had previously designed. Was necessary and met the code requirements. I think the additions of the curtain drain. And the extents of the ground cover and the additional trees will certainly enhance the plan.
Okay, and to be clear, that includes. Uh, both of the exhibits you presented, the Exhibit A. And Exhibit A one, A A one is really B to the. Uh, proposed settlement agreement. So you're saying both of them are necessary?
Necessary? Hmm, I don't know that they're necessary, but the. Intent behind the temporary diversion on forty two. Will certainly help in the interim. While the forty two application is being heard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Sweeney. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mister Coke there in testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mister Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close that portion of the meeting. At at this time, we'll have any comments from any members of, I'm sorry, Mister Kaplan, do you have any questions or comments? Or you can happy with everything we've has been said so far?
I believe everything that was said is so far the terms of the engineering that we did agree to as part of. The proposed settlement agreement, yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, at this time, we'll have any members of the public that have any comments on this application. And we're gonna focus on the stormwater management portion of the application. You have three minutes. Please raise your hand and be identified.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I am seeing no hands raised in the attendee audience.
Great, so we'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay. Mister Yello, do you have anything to sum up or you're done or where?
Just a couple minutes, just a couple minutes. I believe that a summation is appropriate in this application. The application was for a storm management system. Colliers presented a a complete and detailed plan. And testified that, in fact, the design exceeded the requirements of the township ordinances. And the state code requirements, but nevertheless proposed. In its capacity in order to do that. Just to recall for the board that not only is the underground. Chamber system proposed for the stormwater management, there are interconnections to the pre-existing. Ten seepage bit tanks that further enhance the system. And that the plan submitted for stormwater management also included. A reduction in the size of the applicant's driveway and the replacement of the driveway. With pervious pavers to further reduce any. Any impact to stormwater flowing on the property. After we started our meeting, there were questions concerning soil. And Colliers then did a geotechnical investigation of the property. Where the chambers were proposed to be located. And a geant technical data report was generated on April second, twenty twenty five to show that. The soils were even better than they had calculated. Their calculations were based on assumptions. Their assumptions were more conservative than the actual. Uh, soils that were present and more than, were more than adequate. They were exemplary for the chamber system. Uh, that report was submitted to the board. I'm sure the board will recall the testimony of my client, the manager of the Waymaker. Where he explained that this is his home. He had filed for permits and inadvertently the contractor. Disturbed more than an acre of property. That was never his intention. Um, there was never his intention to construct a ten-foot wall that was a wall that was located on the property. As a temporary shoring and that the applicant specified that it was his intention. To bring his property into compliance and he was left under the impression. That he could in fact restore everything and not end up. In a situation where he had violations. That was not to be. Colliers was hired and Colliers came up with the stormwater management plan. And has provided excellent testimony, excellent backup. And then went beyond that with regard to meeting with Llewelyn Park in order to come up with this enhanced. Landscaping plan and additional curtain drain in the lawn area. Uh, to assure that all of the enhancements and betterments with regard to. The stormwater management system. Were implemented. Um, I think that what you have before you is a good faith applicant who proceeded by permit. Contractor made a mistake and he came before the board. Um, I think that the outreach to Llewelyn Park. And to agree to do additional plantings and and give Llewelyn Park additional insurances. And to enhance the system shows the good faith of the applicant. The replacement of the concrete elliptical pipe. With stone is further indication of the good faith of this applicant and the manner in which he approached this. The broken pipes were replaced again, thought that there was nothing to it because there were broken clay pipes. And they were replaced with something that was more manageable. Um, and they're willing to take it out. Suffer the loss and put in stone and check dams. Um, this is an applicant who has lived in West Orange for twenty seven years. Plans to stay there until he is a grandfather and has enough grandchildren running around his backyard. That he could sit and enjoy their use of his backyard. So I would say to the board, this application is complete. It is well based, it is well supported, and we'd ask that you would please. Vote to approve it. And because of the outreach to Llewelyn Park with the settlement agreement, which I have provided. To your secretary and your attorney, um, the applicant is perfectly fine. With having that settlement agreement, a condition of approval. If the board should vote in that manner. I thank you for your time and your attention and the fact that as many of you came out in all of these special meetings. And provided good comments, good questions and engage with this applicant. So I wanna thank the board and thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mister Yello. Uh, Miss McGovern, the first thing I have to ask is. Our steep slope ordinance twenty five twenty eight. Does talk about if there is a problem, I'll put into layman's terms, if there's a problem in the area and you go to fix the problem. It doesn't trigger a variance, however, it was also, also to be a minimal problem. Do you think that a variance would be needed in order to do this? So the applicant doesn't have to come back before the planning board? Or can we use that operative portion of the steep slope ordinance to say, okay, we understand? And there is no variance needed.
Okay, I'm, I actually checked with Mister Scott and I believe Mister Scott. Is going to confirm that there's no steep slope variance necessary for the elliptical pipe or any of the other proposed work. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it's it's better from him than it is from.
Okay, but that takes, I just wanna, you know. Do as good, good as we can with this. There are trees, the the condition is that chapter twenty five does not have trees in it anymore. So the, any tree plantings has to be evaluated and approved by the town forester. So we'll make that a condition. We will make a condition that. Prior to our next meeting, Mister Scott must be provided with all information so he and Miss Carballo can evaluate it. And ensure that he's satisfied that all the town ordinances and state ordinances are. Applied to.
May I make a suggestion?
Go right ahead.
I believe Mister Scott can correct me that the only potential issue that Mister Scottney. And Miss Caraballo had was with respect to the change in the ditch, which may or may not be. A repairian way which would be monitored or governed by D E P. So I believe that that portion of it, which, cuz now I have the opportunity of glancing at the agreement. A little bit more than anybody else, like, not that long, but that that can be severed out. So we can do it as a condition where any portion of the agreement, which really covers these contingencies. If not, if not satisfied by the D E P or not permitted by the D E P, they'll just, they'll just be excised out. As something the applicant has to do. Rather than look for a follow-up approval unless there's some reason that Mister Scott can tell us. What else that, I don't know what else they would be kind of voting down, so to speak. Um, if 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 I'm not mistaken, it was just about the ditch, but I may, I just wanna confirm that.
They, I can just say that the agreement.
It's amazing how Mister Scott, Mister Scott's supposed to be talking and your lips are moving. Hang on one second. Let Mister Scott speak, please.
Uh, yes, so with regard to the ditch, uh, you know, we defer to the Department of Environmental Protection. If they do come back and say, um, you know, that the the ditch cannot be moved from its current location. Uh, I I think we can work something out where it will not require another action by the board or another approved by the board.
Great. Is that okay, Miss Triolo?
I I I'm not sure that I'm understanding. If the ditch can't be removed from its current location and relocated. Then it doesn't have to be in accordance with the agreement with Llewelyn Park.
Right, all the other parts of the agreement will still stay put. You have a certain drain and the extra trees.
Everything on forty, everything on forty, the berm on forty two will remain. But if the D E P says the ditch can't be relocated, then we're not gonna do it.
Right, then all of the aspects easement, uh, the actual relocation, that'll just be severed out. And we'll make that as a condition.
The agreement provides for it. The agreement provides for it so that.
I understand that, but I wanted to.
This application is only for forty and we are agreeing to do all of those plantings, the additional curtain drain. Everything on the stormwater management plan. Um, in order to get this property moved from a dirt pile. To something that is more workable.
I also wanna be clear, the agreement I have today was only signed by your client, but we're still gonna use that. And the and the aspects of that agreement are the are the conditions. And hopefully Llewelyn Park signs off on it, but if they don't, your still, your client will still be bound to what they've represented in that agreement that they will do. Pending the D E P issue.
If they have an issue, if they have an issue, Rob Simon has my phone number and I have his phone number. And we'll, we'll talk it through, but it's my understanding that. They're okay with it. They're okay with all the concepts and. Again, and the agreement provides for any amendments anyway, so.
Well, my point is, is the planning board and the condition attached to this resolution regarding the agreement. Is only gonna be what's in here now. If you all decide something else between Llewelyn Park and you, if it needs another application. Then that's what it is, or if it's something that you two can agree on.
Put it to you, let me put it to you this way. The applicant is complying with all of the terms of the agreement. On forty. And everything that pertains to forty has been testified to by Mister Cokely. And if an issue comes up with forty two, I can say very clearly to this board. It's not your problem. It becomes the zoning board's problem because we're pending in the zoning board. But as far as the planning board here, the only issue is stormwater management. And the additional A one, which deals with all the additional plantings, the curtain drain. The removal of the pipe, which again, as Mister Cokely said, does not trigger the steep slope. Ordinance, um, and it'll be all complied with.
Great, thank you, Mister Kaplan.
I see yellow hands. Does that mean something?
Yes, yes, it does. I'm calling on Mister Kaplan.
I just need to make a point that Llewelyn Park has not signed the agreement. Everything that's been testified to this evening. Has been agreed to as far as engineering goes. If this ditch cannot be moved. The engineering is not complete. The engineering that we agreed to is that the ditch is moved. If it's not moved, then. There's no agreement cuz it's gotta be moved. We need to.
Mister Kaplan, that is not true, Mister Kaplan. I'm sorry. The agreement specifically provides for that to be excised. That is not true. And if that's the case, and if that's Mister, Mister Kaplan's opinion, then I withdraw the settlement agreement as being part. Of our approval because that is not what is in the agreement.
Okay, Miss McGovern, before this devolves. Can we make this a condition that both? The applicant and Llewelyn Park have to agree after he, uh, no, we can't do that.
No, no. The, I believe Mister Scott can straight me out if I'm wrong, but I believe that Mister Scott's testimony was, and I believe that. Llewelyn, uh, the other testimony of Mister Cokely was. The system that they designed is satisfactory. This agreement that they came to enhances that. And makes it even better. So that this one aspect with the drainage ditch. Can be excised out and it would. Still create better drainage than the system that was originally before the board. Which I believe Mister Scott said was somewhat satisfactory. Now, if I'm incorrect about that, Mister Scott, please correct me.
You are correct. I am satisfied with the design of their stormwater management system.
So the deal that the two parties have is. Between them, but it it's helpful to us because we can attach it as a condition and enhance this application to make it better. But within that agreement. And I don't know if it's gonna break down or not, that there is, there's no control over what the D E P is going to say. We have that with every case. Yes, we're always waiting to see what they're gonna say. They they have the ultimate say.
So the.
That would be a price that matter.
Yes, so the conditions of the agreement enhance the application. Any way you look at it, and if there's a, an adverse decision by the D E P, then the two parties will work it out.
I'll have to figure that one out.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Chairman, pardon the interruption. Uh, Mayor McCartney has her hand raised.
I I got, I got, yeah, I know. I I got Mayor McCartney. I'm trying to get these, I wanna get this done and I'll go to McCartney. Thank you very much. I got it. Okay, so, okay, Mister Kaplan, so that's where we are. And Mayor McCartney. Mayor McCartney?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think I was still. Stuck on the D E P and the ditch, and if that's not approved, how does that help Llewelyn Park? And how do they work that out? I was thinking along the same lines as Mister Kaplan. How do you work that out if the D E P is not?
Well, it sounds like there are, there are many advan, from what, layman's terms for me, it sounds like there's many advantages. For both the applicant and Llewelyn Park for this agreement.
I hear that.
One of the, one of the prongs of the agreement is in the hands of the D E P. If they, uh, if they decide it can't be done, or they decide it needs to be modified. The applicant and Llewelyn Park will work that one item out. They will have to agree on something. Or disagree on something and they'll end up adjudicating it. But the, the, uh, these additions will only enhance what's been brought up so far.
Okay, then there was, all right, there was also landscaping plan too, is, are we going to add anything, any condition or on the tree replacement plan?
That's, that I conditioned is up to the town forester. We don't have anything to do with that anymore. That's up to the town forester.
Okay.
But it is a condition.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, do any of the members of the board have any questions or comments? Before we move forward? Okay, seeing none. So I want to thank Mr. Coakley and I want to thank Mr. Scott, you two of the most operative people in this process. Providing the most information about what we have and Ms. Triolo, you're a wonderful advocate for your client. And Mr. Simon is a wonderful advocate for his client, for his client. Yes, okay, so having said that and listened to the information at hand, the, in my mind, there's two parts to the application. The first part of the application is the true stormwater management system that we were tasked to look at to start out with. And then there was the ancillary part of the application where other things came into play. Other things came into play, the, the good works by Llewelyn Park and Mr. Cohen, the applicant, the Waymaker. Helped myself understand that everybody's working in good faith to make it good for all parties. To that end. If you vote, if you vote yea or yes, the application, the resolution passes. If you but no or nay, the resolusion will be defeated. But I make a motion that we approve PB twenty-four dash nineteen, the Waymaker LLC Block one oh six, Lot twenty dot oh three, Zone R one, for the Eagle Ridge Way. With conditions as noted. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, Garino seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Chairman, are we going to hear the conditions?
No, we can go back through them.
Yes, please.
Yeah, it's important.
The trees will be approved by the forester. They will abide by the agreement with Llewelyn Park, uh, attached to the extent not prohibited by, uh, any DEP. Restrictions. They will abide by the amended landscape and drainage exhibit and the exhibits attached to that agreement and the agreement will be attached as one of the, as a condition. Full calculations will be provided for. For A1 modifications and. Well, in the agreement, see, the agreement states what they're going to do, so the agreement will be attached. With respect to. The work being performed, if the drainage ditch is permitted to be removed, they will submit a copy of the easement between. Forty and forty-two, and they will also submit a copy of the agreement. Between the owner of forty and the owner of forty-two for the work to be done as per. Uh, what is reflected in the agreement.
Ms. Triolo had her hand up.
I just wanted clarification that for purposes of this application, A1. Only applies, I don't believe that the board can. Include A2 because it's not the lot that is before the board. I just wanted to clear that up.
Well, I think we can include it as illustrative of.
You can include it as an exhibit.
Yes, that's what I'm intending to do.
Okay, I'm good. I'm sorry.
Okay. And it's the case that the condition, that the, that the conditions in the agreement apply, even if for some reason the agreement never gets signed by Llewelyn Park, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay, do any of the members have any questions? Or comments? Seeing none. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Opper?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Oh, yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody and all the good work that we have done for the applicant and the township.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Don't go away yet, members of the board. Uh, the next regular planning board meeting will be held Wednesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM. And the next special meeting of the planning board will be held April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM, uh, in person in Town Hall. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino makes the motion. I second on the motion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Guys, have it. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.